Welcome to the Rockland School Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 28th at 6:30 PM. I'd like to first start with the acceptance of the minutes. We have a motion.
So, what's second?
For the minutes of May 13th, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote. I see nothing under communications. So, in the audience, I have Ms. Walsh, if you'd like to come on up.
Is that the king, by the way?
His brother was the king.
Oh, his brother.
He has next year, though, maybe. And Matty was on court.
Alright.
So, it was a big prom night. Everyone had fun.
That is a travel.
But, he's been here twice.
Excuse me, it's my fault.
No worries. So, I'm here with the students tonight. They're going to take over in a minute. But, the first trip I was going to recap on was our field trip in December. The English Department took students to see To Kill a Mockingbird on Broadway. And I know it's been a while, but we decided to wait until we had both trips to talk about. We went December 19th, right before break. Forty-five freshmen and seniors. It ended up being seniors as well, and they were, if not just as excited about the freshmen reading the novel, maybe even more excited about something they had read three years previous. Since seeing it, it's become really cool to watch the students react to. They just got nominated for nine Tony Awards. It's the highest grossing American play in history right now, and sold out through the end of the year. So, them getting to see the original Broadway cast, seeing that it's getting all this acclaim. In the moment, we got to make so many connections to what they had just read, what the seniors remembered from years before, the modern take on race discrimination, on cultural issues. We had a lot of great discussions about it. The day of the play, they really made Rockland proud, as students always do on trips. We took their cell phones away to teach them theater etiquette, and they all coped with it very well. And leaving, all the chaperones got compliments from the ushers and surrounding groups that we had the best behaved group there. So, we were really proud of them for that. Former Vice President Joe Biden was there the same day as us. Some of our students got selfies with him, which they thought was really fun. And now he's running for president. So, few different memories they made that day, but it was a wonderful trip. And if a play ever comes in to our curriculum again, I think we would definitely do it. Then, I have these lovely people here with me to talk about our April trip to Europe. We went to Germany, Austria, Czech Republic, Switzerland. Thirty-four juniors and seniors with three chaperones. Before they share their opinions of it, I also just wanted to recognize Matty. Three of you were able to come to her Global Ambassador presentation a couple of weeks ago, which she did an amazing job presenting on Japanese food from her trip the year before. And then she also, last week, kind of a spur of the moment thing, we went into the EF headquarters in Cambridge. She was asked to speak in front of their entire staff. Three hundred people in a town hall setting about her experiences with Japan and Europe, her opinions on travel, her outlook on what could make student travel better. And the president of EF has offered her a job when she graduates. So, she's in a pretty good position already with college plans looming next year. But, I want to introduce Lizzie McGaffigan, Tyler Johnson, and Matty Gere to share their experiences in Europe.
So, my favorite part of the trip was Easter Day. So, we visited like a thermo[232.76][232.76](laugh) I'm going to sound like a nerd, but a thermo recycling plant. And we got to like take a tour of some like, it was like a waste treatment plant. And it was like a lot of fun, me and Hannah Wiley, to see like some things that we've learned in school. So, with AP Environmental Science, like actually see it in real life was like such a cool thing to see.
And you talked about it, talked about your blog.
Oh, yeah. And we have a podcast that we talked about it on. So, we came back and talked about what we learned and what we saw. That was my favorite part.
Alright, so, my favorite part of the trip was each country that we went to, they had different Easter market set up, which I also believe they have for like Christmas as well. And it was just really interesting to see like how like each country like celebrates Easter a little differently. And like you were able to like walk down these markets and see like handmade goods and stuff like that. So, it was less like touristy and more like definitely geared towards their cultures. That was definitely my favorite part.
So, I've been on a few of the Travel Club trips, and I just love traveling because you've got to immerse yourself in different cultures around the world and learn more about the history and the cultures around the world. And then I love sitting in coffee shops and trying new coffees from other countries.
Very cool.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I think it's just a great thing that you guys are able to do it. It broadens your horizons so much. I mean, now you watch the news and you see. I was there. You can point these things out. And really, it's wonderful that you're able to do that. And it's great that we have faculty that make it happen.
Go ahead.
Oh, the only question I have is about the environmental, the recycling plant. Tell me just a tad more about that. What was it? Are they recycling everything or just they had?
So, like the, it was like the trash. So, all like the trash came in, and then you burn it. And I forget what the word was, but like the metal that, what? The metal that like, so they burned it to such a high temperature. So, like everything else burns except for like the metal, and they can reuse it. And then they kind of treat the pollution that comes from it.
Zurich, this was in Zurich. It's an incineration plant, yeah. Switzerland has one of the highest rates of recycling, and they're known as one of the most environmentally friendly countries because it's required to recycle. And there's high fines, they said, and they won't pick up things if they're not packaged right for recycling and trash. So, the students were able to learn about that. And then even on Easter Day, it's an up and running plant. So, we were the only ones there, except for the essential workers. But, they got to see everything. It was, we were a little skeptical, if we're being honest, about we're in Switzerland, we're not going to a chocolate factory, or we're going to a waste incineration plant. But, all the students really embraced the idea of, okay, we're going to learn about something unexpected and different. And Lizzie and her friends that are in the Environmental Club, I think particularly took an interest in it, which made us proud of kind of what the curriculum in the Science Department is doing. We had a science teacher as a chaperone.
Right.
Yeah, and not expected on a tour that you think history, maybe English or art would be more of the curriculum. But, I didn't know that about Switzerland. I don't think many of us did. And getting to see them put their hard hats on and
I was going to say that. We got to wear hard hats. It was the best part.
Yeah. And actually see what it, the process was. I think it's one of those things we take for granted, that someone comes and takes care of the trash and the recycling and what is, how it's affecting the world. And they got a new outlook on it. So,
Right.
One of the unexpected highlights, I would say.
Do you find any relationship to any of the recycling we do in the United States, any place, even locally? You know, where they do it? Does it match up?
We don't have a lot of plants like they do over there, where they do the thermo recycling.
Okay. Is there any plants you know in the United States? Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, not like that, I don't think. They said it was a pretty unique situation.
Good. Alright. Thank you.
Now, for the most important. Let's talk food.
Matty, I was going to ask you about your favorite thing in Japan was ice cream. What was your favorite thing on this trip?
So, primarily, no. It was still ice cream. When we were in Zurich, my friend Caitlin and I stumbled upon this ice cream. And it was like spaghetti ice cream. So, like it came out in this restaurant, and it literally looked like a plate of spaghetti. It was so cool. It was probably the best.
And you didn't think to bring us a picture of it? What else about the food? Had to be more than just ice cream?
We ate
Pretzels.
Pretzels.
Shetzel.
We had schnitzel too, in Germany.
And how was the coffee compared to? Was one country better?
I mean, everything's better than Dunkin' Donuts, so.
I don't know. I don't drink coffee. I don't eat ice cream either.
Prague is my favorite coffee place.
Vienna.
Oh, yeah.
Vienna.
Yeah. Yeah, I could see that.
That's good. I got to see Tyler in his tux the other night. He looked very handsome. Well, thanks.
Thank you for all that you do.
And Joe, without the students being excited about it, everyone here being supportive, so.
But, I think what, what I really appreciate is, and I'm not sure that everyone knows, but you give up your vacations to go on these trips. So, I'm sure it is.
It's a learning vacation.
But, we appreciate it. And you've, and you've really built a strong program, and these kids are benefiting from it. So, thank you.
Sparking the travel bug.
Yeah, absolutely.
The big bug.
Absolutely.
So, thank you guys.
Research, right? It was all research.
Right, exactly.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, I'll pass it to Dr. Kron for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just want to report on last Thursday, the 23rd, the Rockland Education Foundation held its annual reception for our grant recipients. And some of the recipients got to share what they did with their grants and how they impacted their classrooms. I'm always impressed by this meeting because to me, it represents, to have Scott McKinley in the same room as a second-year teacher, for example, is always exciting to me. And I know it means a lot to the foundation to collect the money. And I know it means a lot for people to give of their money. But, this reception gives us an opportunity to really put everyone in the same room. And it was, it was exciting and invigorating. The RAF Annual Ralph Lordy Golf Tournament will take place on Friday, June 21st. So, mark your calendars for that. That's the foundation's main fundraiser and always a great event. So, again, Friday, the 21st at Ritter Farm Golf Club. So, mark your calendars for that. And secondly, just an update on the building, Rockland Elementary Building Project. Last Thursday night, we held an information session for the public. We had a modest turnout, but we had some good questions. And it was good to hear, hear a little bit from the public about some of the things they were, they're interested in. We were asked about emergency plans and evacuation plans, and asked a little bit about traffic and what that might look like. But, it was a good, it was a good meeting. And currently, we're in the process of designing for, of setting up four design groups. And those four groups will look at everything from the color of the tile to emergency preparedness, to the boiler systems that will go in the building. It's, it's looking at, again, trying to get a, a broad look at all these very, very important aspects of the project. And September 11th is our big target date because that is when our schematic design will be submitted to the MSBA. So, that's where we are with the elementary building project. And that's all I have.
Alright, that's plenty.
Alright.
I had the pleasure of going to the foundation's reception as well. And it just fascinates me how much money they raise and to, like you said, get to hear firsthand from the teachers what they did with it. All different things, all different ranges, from carpentry machines to birds in the classroom. So, it was just fascinating to me that they get to touch so many different areas in the school. So, we are blessed to have them. We have reports up, financial reports for April for the school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, the cafeteria, and the daycare. We have five motions.
Five motions to accept.
All in favor? That's a vote. And we have monthly reports for March and April. We have eighteen monthly reports. Art, athletic, computer technology, daycare, deans, English five through eight, English nine through twelve, family, consumer, science and technology, math five through eight, math nine through twelve, music, physical education, health, radio, TV station, social studies, special education, nine through twelve, the middle school, foreign language, and science.
Eighteen motions to accept. Threeeen seconds.
All those in favor? Awesome.
A lot of good words there.
Exactly. We're whipping through them, but it does take us time at home to go through them all. Alright, old business. I have a request for the approval of the 2019-2020 Rockland High School Handbook.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Motion to accept.
Second.
With changes.
With changes?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Alright.
That's a vote. And then I'm going to pass it to Dr. Kron for the high school's NEASC Collaborative Conference Report.
Excellent. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Thank you and good evening. Today, tonight, I'm here to present the NEASC findings to you. You should have received the report, which I believe is thirty pages long, from NEASC, as well as a summary. What I thought I would do tonight is go over the summary, which has the commendations as well as the areas of growth and recommendations. But, before I do that, I just want to thank some key people. The NEASC process is a year-long journey of self-reflection, and it happens once every ten years, this self-reflection. They do come again in 2021, but that's to check in on our progress that we've made towards our school improvement plan. But, just a quick thank you to Rich McAllister and Greg Rowe from the History Department. They were both the NEASC Accreditation Co-Chairs, which is a, a big task. It's voluntary, and they gave up a lot of time, as well as the department heads and the site council at the high school. They've all been just critical towards compiling the report and hosting the visiting committee. So, it starts, the NEASC process this year, it started with a survey that we sent out to students, parents, and faculty. And then we had to compile, it was ended up being a hundred-page report. It's called the Self-Reflection Report. We submitted that to the accreditation agency. They reviewed it. They came in March. They spent two days with us. They had a positive experience. From their report, which you have, we had the task as a faculty, as a student body, of coming up with a school improvement plan from that. So, just to go over the NEASC commendations. First, what they liked about our school, they said we had a positive school culture and climate, where students and staff demonstrated a mutual respect for one another. They were happy with our Tier One interventions that we have to support academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of our students. They felt we have a lot of school-wide organizational practices that really differentiate and meet the needs of each student. They, they really liked the collaboration among the different agencies within the town, including Town Hall, the school committee, the site council, the local businesses, the RAF, the alumni, the amount of faculty that went to Rockland High School, they found extremely impressive. They were happy with the adequate and dependable funding that we have for our co-curricular learning opportunities, the relationships between businesses, the community, and the higher education institutions. Sometimes when you go through this self-reflection, you realize you're doing a lot of things well you never thought you were doing well, until somebody else comes in and tells you that. That was one that surprised me when they said, oh, you, you really have a lot of partnerships with different agencies. The facilities and grounds, they felt they were well-maintained. The caseload size of our support staff, which is guidance, which allows for personalized interventions and support for all of our students. The collaborative teamwork from the faculty, staff, student, and parent, different leadership groups. The safe environment for students and adults with the additional security cameras, the full-time resource officer we have in our district, and the new lockdown devices we have in the doors. They liked all those things. The efforts of our educators that have been engaged in ongoing formal and informal collaboration and professional development to improve student learning, and really just the involvement of all community members in the school improvement plan process. And the last one, really developing the Vision of the Graduate, which was a new document last year, doing so collaboratively. The areas of growth that they indicated, we as a faculty, we come up with, we came up with the first five. So, every school that goes through this process identifies five areas of growth. We looked at our report that we wrote, the hundred-page document, and we came up with the first five. NEASC then said, sure, great, we like your five, but then we're going to add two more. So, we ended up with seven areas of growth. That's very normal. The first area of growth is writing curriculum in a consistent format for all courses and all departments. We'd also like to do this vertically, K to twelve. Second one is using the school's core values, beliefs about learning, and vision of the graduate to drive student learning. We have a document that has a lot of transferable skills on it, but right now, we're not implementing it in the classrooms through formalized rubrics. So, that's something we're transitioning to. Really talking as a faculty about developing a school-wide understanding for the revision of student work and makeup work, so that we have consistency across the school and departments. Encouraging all students to embrace civic engagement and social and personal responsibility, that was one we identified, but they actually came and said we were doing well on that. They were surprised we put that there. But, they said, leave it there anyway if it's something you as a faculty want to work on. Number five, creating targeted interventions and system for monitoring that helps at-risk subgroups, in particular, English learners, students on IEPs, economically disadvantaged were the subgroups. Number six and seven were the ones NEASC added, really focused in on instructional practices, which as a faculty, that's the conversation you want to start having in more depth. Really trying to get students to be more active learners in the classroom and discussing, reflecting on our own instructional practices so that we are engaging students more actively. And seven kind of goes hand in hand with that, looking at creating authentic learning opportunities where students are leading their own learning. That's one I'm really excited to tackle with our faculty. And that includes both formative assessments, which are those checking for understanding, and the summative assessments, which are those end of the unit, end of the year, bigger assessments. So, those were the commendations and areas of growth. We then took this document, and we developed a school improvement plan. So, what I think I'll do next, do you want me to, Dr. Kron, keep going with the school?
Just go right into the improvement plan. Is that okay with everyone?
The school improvement plan, you have three documents in front of you. You should have a map, a visual. You should have a school improvement plan. And then you should also have a really long document called the NEASC Growth Plan. The NEASC Growth Plan is nineteen pages long. That is a three-year plan that we have to submit to the accreditation agency for review. It's much more detailed than the school improvement plan. So, if you're looking for more detail, the Growth Plan is the detailed document. It tells you every little step along the journey. The School Improvement Plan is a six-page document, which discusses each of our tasks within our district strategic plan. What you'll see on the School Improvement Plan in parentheses, if you see like N1 or N5, what that means is that's NEASC Recommendation Five. That's where it's referencing the NEASC recommendation we're trying to tackle. I think I'll go over the visual just because it's a little bit easier. We thought as a faculty, it was overwhelming looking at the school improvement plan. So, we put together, department heads, the administration, myself, visual, which really what we're trying to do, we, when we looked at the district strategic plan, we looked at the NEASC recommendations, we put together this model, which we believe starts with focusing in on a rigorous and consistent curriculum. So, we're asking our faculty to really work on that first. Some departments are done, some are starting, some are in the middle. Once they're done, that department, they're going to move on to their assessments and really looking at them from a few lenses, looking at their common assessments, redesigning their formative assessments, so that we're doing more checking for understanding, but using the data from those formative assessments to really adjust our teaching. And then, once that's done, we really want to start talking about engagement in the classroom, really looking at what active learning is. What are some best practices that promote getting kids more engaged? And that could include opportunities for really emphasizing peer observations among our staff. We think that could be a great way to improve as a faculty. We feel these three things, curriculum, assessments driving instruction, student engagement. Those are the three things we're really focused on. We like the triangle because we think curriculum is the foundation, and then assessments and student engagement, it all leads up. What these pillars down below, shared responsibility, interventions, and connections, we feel like these things need to hold everything in place. So, we need to have shared responsibility. Things that, including the attendance policy, we've, we've started this year to organize the chemical health policy, which you've just approved tonight. We've redone our field trip policy, which you've approved, starting to look at student work and makeup work policy, looking at cell phones, the cellphone policy, giving more thought to that, looking at an open house event and how it'll be an event for all staff for the first time this year, trying to look at our new freshman mentoring program we want to start, so that all freshmen come in and have a mentor, which is an upperclassman, having a captain's leadership training, so our athletes, who are captains, are getting more formalized learning, training, and continuing a new program we started this year called Bulldog Buddies. We feel this all falls within the realm of personal and social and civic responsibility, which requires everybody's help. The second pillar is called interventions, which is really looking at Tier Two interventions, which are focused on in-classroom supports for our students. We really need to work in this area. We have great Tier One interventions, which are Saturday School, after-school support program, but we need to do more in-the-classroom support for our, for our teachers and students. Really looking at providing more professional development in the area to support English-language learner students, as well as co-teaching, really clarifying expectations of our co-teachers still. And then, connections is the last pillar. Really, we want to try a new recognition next year of Organization of the Month. We think it'd be fun to highlight a different organization each month. We've recognized kids these past few years. We really want to shift it more to organizations to try to change just a different way of, of connecting with kids and giving them the spotlight. We want to try to do more outreach by getting more kids to visit college campuses, even if that means taking a day out of the school day to get them to tour colleges. And then, really expanding our career partnership. We started this year with Mass Hire. Mass Hire is a program through the South Shore Workforce Development Board, which helps our students get jobs out of high school. They will come to our school, and they will provide advising and mentoring. Our guidance councils are excellent with the college piece. Sometimes, as the career piece is a little bit more tricky. So, that's something that Mass Hire, it's government-funded, they're willing to help us with. And really trying to take the Credit for Life Fair, which we've done now for two years, but connect it more to our curriculum, because we do the event, and then we kind of forget about it. So, we want to kind of tie it more to our curriculum. And we have a new feature in Naviance, which is where the kids keep their online portfolio of their resumes and their future plans. Now, what we want, we purchased, we want to purchase for next year is a course planner. So, what it does, it takes the courses that they're interested in taking at Rockland High School, and then based on their interests and how they do on these courses, it will give them an indicator of what schools may be best for them based on the interest in performance, as well as careers, so colleges and careers. So, looking at their course load. So, that's a new feature. So, that's what we're looking at for next year. A lot of fun stuff.
Sounds awesome. I think that you are that guy, that you like to have everything sort of lined up and organized and neat, and I love that about you. And I think this reflects upon that. I like, I think that you like to keep your thumb and make sure everything's sort of driving straight, and that shows. So, thank you for the time putting it in.
You spoke of the two individuals that kind of rallied and got the soul together. You didn't speak of yourself, who was kind of the head of it all. And I, I've done this before. I've been around it. And the whole atmosphere was different. The, the committee that came here was more, I wasn't caring, I don't know if that's the right word, but they didn't come in trying to find things wrong. They didn't come in with something to prove. They came in here to just look and see what was going on and come up with some helpful additions as to things they thought could, you know, we could do better. I was impressed with them. They came from diverse areas. I mean, they weren't all from Abington, or from Hanover. They would come from Connecticut, as I recall, and there were other places.
Right. I agree with you.
So, I was, I was just impressed with the whole procedure. You've certainly got some work cut out for you here. But, I just, all in all, I was impressed on that one very well.
I'd have to agree with you. I sat with you in that meeting. I only got to jump in at, at the end, but I felt the same way. They were welcoming to what we were, had to say and, you know, more listening to us, not sort of pointing the finger.
I think, but this is what, our third iteration with NEASC? The third or fourth?
Probably. That makes sense.
Yeah. I remember being in the, when they first started. And they were really just, I mean, they used, you know, they were a lot different back then because they came in as an inspection team, not as a
Right. It wasn't that way at all.
Not as a cooperative, you know, let me help you, you know, obtain it. And I've seen that. And I think that they've also evolved, evolved over, over a period of time. What, the comment I'd just like to make is that one of the, the things about the buildings, the grounds area, people do a super job of that.
Absolutely.
And they should be commended for that. And the other one is this civic engagement. I'm curious about that, is, is that you're looking at a service-learning type of idea through process of getting in there, you know, try to tie everything together and, you know, I'm just curious about that one.
Yeah, I think there's a few things we're looking at. Definitely community service and restructuring that a little bit.
Right.
So that kids are doing more meaningful community service.
Right.
That's definitely a focus in that. It's also about not just, right now, we're teaching kids about being civically engaged, but we don't know if they're living it.
Yeah, right.
Whether it's getting involved in voting, you know, are they registered to vote when they graduate? You know, being actively involved. We think kids are doing it, but are they actively engaged? Are they buying into it?
Right. Exactly. Whether they just checking it off as a, yeah, okay, we did that, we did that, we did that. Now, let's put that aside and go off, do, do something that we really like to do.
Right. I get what you're saying.
Yeah, that, I see that all the time. Yeah, that, I enjoy reading NEASC, you know, like I said, it has evolved, evolved a lot. And I remember reading the form of the previous report. Thank you.
I think most, more important than how the improvement plan looks on paper and how it's organized, I think what we should really speak about is the culture that you have started to create in the high school. You have rolled out an idea of mentoring freshmen. I can tell you, I started in the school as an eighth grader. And I was in with seniors and, here you go, kid, have fun, you know? And having the older kids, if you knew some of them, and they can be like, hey, go here and do this, that sort of thing, this is what is expected of you, is huge. And looking at all this and seeing that, the idea of a captain's leadership program, you know, bulldog buddies, mentoring, everything that you're doing is giving these kids a purpose. Because so much more of what needs to be done in life is, is more than let me look at what my book says and take a test, right? We've got to teach these kids how to be involved, how to care for each other, how to be accountable, how to be leaders, how to make an impact as they how to be leaders, how to make an impact as they grow. And what I can say in my time on the board and watching you run this school, I've been nothing more than amazed. I've watched kids become more and more involved. I see things like the mentoring, I see the top dog stuff, I see all that, and everybody generally feels like, you know, everybody knows everybody, they're all great together. I like it, I like where it's going, and I'm happy to see that it's going to keep going that way. So I want to say, hey, I don't, yeah, this looks great, but I don't care if it was handed to me on a scribble or note, I just think all you have to do is look around and see the work that you've done, and I, to that, to you, Dr. Harrison.
We have a great group of teachers and an awesome group of kids, so we're very lucky at the high school and really across the district, so it's a great team.
I think it's building a community inside of the high school is what you're doing, and I saw that the day I shadowed, I'd have to agree with Mr. Garofalo, that it's true. I noticed it in the middle school and in the elementary schools as well. There's, each school is getting to be its own little community, and that's, you know, exciting for us to be able to see. So thank you.
The only other question I had reading is, one of the things that really caught my attention was the note about absenteeism, yeah, and the percentage of absenteeism. I think that's a key issue, you know, that enhances the culture too, if you get everybody here to be involved.
It's definitely a key issue. This is the second year where the Department of Ed will ding us on our accountability rating if we don't improve by reducing the percentage of students who are chronically absent.
Right.
So last year we improved just slightly, which was good. Any improvement's better than not improving in terms of the growth world of the Department of Ed, so I'm optimistic this year we'll improve again. Ms. Paulding has done a ton of work, Mr. Damon's done a ton of work trying to tackle student attendance through the credit loss process and recovery, so they've really worked with students closely, but they take the kids' credit away if they're absent more than 14 times, but then they work with the student to get it back. They create plans with the kids. So I think we're improving in that area, but you're absolutely right, if you're not there, it's hard to learn, it's hard to do well.
Exactly, right. Dr. Cron says that often.
Yeah, and the other thing too, is Aspen working for you?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's widely used throughout the, I know Massachusetts, I use it every day, but I just want to know if you're, if they've come through with all the stuff that they want, that you need in order to maintain accountability. Yeah, it's a, it's a good product, yeah.
I like it as a parent as well. Any other questions? A motion to approve?
Motion.
All those in favor? Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Vaughn for the Rogers Middle School handbook.
I love someone after him. I don't have a chart, but I've seen his chart, and let me tell you, I think we have three very small changes. If anybody has any questions.
Use the telephone, that's where we move that.
That was when it was a rotary phone, I think, and Mrs. Damon was sitting at the desk. Yeah.
I have one that stands on.
So we're taking that out, since every classroom has a phone.
Yeah, that's fine.
I had no questions. I thought everything you did made sense. It is the first reading.
Motion to approve.
Do we want a table to let them, let it be read again like we did last meeting for the high school?
I think
Motion to approve.
I think it's a good idea to let, you might have people from outside, somebody may be watching this, you never know.
Right, I agree.
And with a question that they could come through and it might make a difference somewhere, so it isn't, as long as it's not going to do any harm to have a second
No, we're right on, we're right on time, so we're going.
Okay, both in the table.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Yeah, I think it's
Mike, I missed you. Did you vote?
I'm a no.
You're a no, okay. All right.
So we can look at it again in two weeks, exactly the same and waste more paper.
Okay, next we have Chartwell's annual update with Adele and Erin.
Hello?
Welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Hackett, would you like to say anything initially, or would you like us to just jump in?
Just to frame this, we are looking for two votes this evening.
Right.
We're looking for a vote to maintain our, the cost of our school lunch program to the students what we're charging for meals, and looking to renew for an additional year with Chartwell's.
Okay. Do we want to present and then vote?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. So as Ms. Hackett mentioned, two issues to vote on this evening, the contract renewal for next year, which we're currently going to enter year three of five. It's a one-year with four renewals, and every year it must be renewed and voted upon, and then we'll discuss meal pricing also. Highlights of this past school year in the program, and then opportunities for next school year. So this is just a reminder, not necessarily anything that was introduced this past school year, but we do have the menus that are online digitally. Parents and students can access them either from the website, the school district website, or if you have the app, which is a Nutrislice app. So we are, have an exclusive partnership, we're the only management company that has this partnership with Nutrislice digital signage or digital menus. And other school districts do have it, but as a company, we're the only company that actually partners exclusively with them. Students and parents can hover over the menu items and get nutrient information and ingredient information on all the menu items, a photo of the food. It's available in different languages, so if you speak Spanish or Portuguese or French, you can access it that way. So it's very helpful, and I think school nurses generally really like it because they get carbohydrate count and so forth for students that have diabetes or have allergies, you know, and come to the school nurse. The school lunch program, per USDA standards, USDA is the governmental overseer of national school lunch programs. They do kind of require school lunch programs to be self-sustaining, so the income and revenue that's generated from school lunch programs is intended to cover all costs and then have some money left over for a rainy day. And so I know that the town appropriated some funding for this coming summer for a new walk-in at Esten, but we were able to, with the reserve from the school lunch program, buy a new serving line for Esten as well. And so the goal is to make a little bit of money every year so that that money can be reinvested in to improve the program. And we've been able to do that for quite a while. And I'll let Adele talk to you a little bit about Discovery Kitchen and also our student choice program, which just started this year.
Hi. This program, these two programs we did, Discovery Kitchen, we did over at Esten Elementary School with the children, and it was really kind of cool. We did it on potatoes, different kinds of potatoes, so the kids could see there are many different kinds of potatoes. We cooked up several different things, the kids got to try them, then they got into discussions about food, and we just kind of rolled with it. It was really kind of exciting. The student choice one I really enjoyed. We do that up at the high school, and we've already done two this year, and the kids get involved because they get to vote. So we take two items which are from stations, as if you haven't been into our kitchens, we have stations set up, pizza stations and whatnot, set up in different areas, and what we did is we allowed the children to pick from two items. And I thought for sure they'd go after the salad one because it was a chicken and Greek salad, it was really kind of cool, but they went after the mojo barbecue pork, which was amazing. It had a really nice taste to it and had some nice spices added to it, and the kids loved it, the teachers came and tried it, and the kids voted, and they voted on that and that following, couple of weeks later, we put it on the menu and the kids got to have it, which was really quite interesting.
Right, right, that's awesome.
And then we do a lot of catering. Catering is a big help in our school lunch programs because where we are self-sufficient and we aren't in the school budget, we're self-sufficient, our catering is a huge asset for us because it gives us more money in our bottom line, which will help us buy the equipment we need. So we're very grateful for the people that go through us for our catering. We have opening events with administration does with us, we have annual senior breakfast and banquets, we do National Honor Society, sports banquets, staff appreciation lunches, and we also provide supplies that the PAC might need for ice cream socia's or whatever it might be whenever needed.
Right.
And we're always there to help out.
You are always there, I can attest to that.
Thank you. And then the next thing we have, which is really, I love this thing because I am a farmer myself, I farm two and a half acres of land, and we got this tower garden in which was absolutely awesome, and I have a young man by the name of Zach Webb, which is a high school student who is very, very involved with this. He cleans it down, he resets it up, we get vegetables around the time, around the school year. We've gotten lettuce, we've gotten basil, we've gotten kale, we've gotten Swiss chard. We take the product, we bring it into the cafeteria, we wash it, clean it, and the kids get to sample it, and the kids absolutely love, you know, the idea of working with this. Zach's been such an asset to this program. Ms. Armstrong is the one that kind of incorporated to pull them in on it. And the thing that's really cool about this is with Jane and I and Colleen, we did three grants this year which we got approved for, and one of the grants is for a program that we're going to be incorporating into the hot stuff camping.
Summer.
And it's going to be on farming. So what will happen is the, these kids are going to learn about how to plant vegetables from start to finish and how you have to take care of it, and what it looks like in the final project. And just today, I just got approved from Lowe's for some supplies that they're going to be given to me for free toward this program, so that was really kind of a cool thing.
This is in our high school.
Right now it's down because it's getting close for the summer.
Yeah.
But it's really kind of cool, you hear the water running. The kids thought it was a sun lamp when it first came, but they've gotten used to it.
Is it, is it earth, is it hydro
Hydroponic. Yeah, it's awesome. It's really fascinating how quickly it comes up, it's amazing.
Oh, yeah. Hydroponic works well. Huh, it's interesting.
It's very cool, I've seen it.
So speaking of produce, there are several programs that Chartwell's embraces and takes advantage of so that we can bring as much local produce to the students in the program as possible. So we have a program where we have dedicated crops where we actually have to submit orders for certain local produce to local farmers in advance. So as a region, from New York down to Connecticut and Rhode Island, we submit orders in advance for certain things at certain times of the year so we can get it locally. We have a flash-frozen program. We partner with a small little co-op out in Franklin County in Massachusetts where they gave, give us maybe three to four different crops a year. Adele might get two or three cases of frozen peppers or frozen broccoli that's local, and then they flash-freeze it so we can have it even in December or January. So that's the flash-frozen program. And then Department of Defense is a USDA program. It's also available to the military, but it's also available to K-12 schools where we can now get, which we had never gotten before, with the commodity program, we can now get fresh produce at least through the month of May at a really discounted rate. So Adele and her staff, they always do a fantastic job promoting fresh fruits and vegetables and color contrast, but all these programs allow us to maximize that at a cost-effective way.
And then just some of the opportunities for the future. One of my areas that I really have concern with is my breakfast program at my high school and middle school. For having the amount of kids I have in there, I don't capture the audience, so I have to find some way that I can bring more children in, especially with the percentage of free and reduced children that we might have throughout the district. I mean, those are the concerns I have. My elementaries, Esten is the school that does the best on the breakfast program because they still have breakfast in the classroom, and it does very well. To continue on with the growth, I also want to increase participation as far as the students. I think my participation for lunch at my high school and middle school is outstanding. For the amount of kids that eat versus the amount of kids in the school, it's really awesome. And then I want to continue demonstrating the student choices because I love to have the kids' involvement, and the Discovery kitchens, I want to put opportunities into Jefferson as well as Memorial Park.
Yeah.
And then I want to do some parent surveys for the elementary to see their concerns.
Just going back to the breakfast program, is it, you think it's just because of the timing, kids getting into school, students getting here, and the time, rushing around, stuff like that?
My high school students, I want to say, I think when, Alan, one of the things Alan and I used to talk about is he used to say, you know, we have to get these kids in school on time so that they eat.
Right.
And I said, they're not going to come in on time, you'll see.
Right.
And sure enough, as I would do breakfast, these kids would be flying through the door as the breakfast cart was going away.
Right.
Trying to get breakfast because they were, I could tell you who they were that were late all the time. So a lot of times the kids don't get into school on time, so Mr. Harrison had mentioned one, Dr. Harrison had mentioned one day that he might consider, considering something like a study program thing that I could have the kids come down, maybe further into the morning, that they might be able to come down and have a breakfast. We haven't incorporated that yet, but that might be something we want to do for some of the kids that we aren't capturing. They might come down and get a breakfast.
Much like a maybe 15-minute break.
We've just touched on, never done anything about, but that might be something we might want to do. Middle school's a little more difficult because the kids come in, and if they don't want to come in, they're outside, so it's kind of hard to kind of capture them. They're, they're going through changes, they won't want to be out with their friends, but there's got to be another way that we might be able to capture them. We've introduced some new things, we brought in a cinnamon bun that the kids absolutely love, we brought it down to the middle school, the kids seemed to like it. We've tried parfaits, we've done smoothies.
What's the process? So what time it starts at? So 7:30?
It's a very short window. So breakfast starts at 7:30 and goes till 8 o'clock at the high school.
Okay.
And middle school's basically the same way, but I'm still sometimes unloading my cart in the cafeteria when the kids are running in to try to grab breakfast before they run to class at the high school.
Right, right.
Because I run the breakfast cart in the morning.
In the morning.
How come we got hummus and not a cinnamon bun?
I should have brought you that.
Because she wants me to fit into this dress.
Healthy, healthy.
We'll discuss that later.
Nothing personal.
I know, I can't help but notice, Dan's gone and now we get healthy food.
Opo.
Your fault.
I know, I took that, I caught that, thank you.
She's doing a great job.
I have to fit into this skirt, yeah, Mr. Garofalo. My children would tell you that this is not how I eat at home, I would want the honey bun.
Yeah.
All right. Are you, I feel like I'm cutting you off. Go ahead, keep going, any other questions?
Any other questions on this slide?
I just want to comment on Adele. She's the nuts and bolts and everything that makes this thing go. We're operating with a profit. Kids love her, administration loves her, I love her. She's just a wonderful person with so many good new ideas, getting our kids to eat good food, food that they enjoy, and that it's good for them. And I just appreciate everything you do, Adele. Thank you.
Thank you, but I couldn't do it without my staff. I have a wonderful bunch of staff.
No, true, I understand.
People are great.
And you're maintaining, the margins are not only being maintained, but they seem to be increasing. You're welcome, that's the Garofalo family specifically.
I was going to say, the Maroni family is very well in the middle school.
My kindergartner eats breakfast at 7:30 in the morning, and then she'll be standing at the bus, and she'll go, Dad, I like the breakfast, just so you know, I'm getting it. What am I going to say? No, you can't eat? And now they actually eat more things than they did before, they're actually trying stuff. Again, my kindergartner comes home and goes, I like cherry tomatoes. Oh, when did that start? Oh, all year I've been eating them. Why won't you tell us that now? It's May. Like, why don't you tell us that in September?
Now you can put them in the garden.
Yeah, right, we kill things and I don't, we don't grow things, we kill them.
I have two questions that I seem to get asked frequently, and one of them is, what do we do or what can we do with the food after? I always get asked for leftover food. I know sometimes we get to give it to the children, I'm not sure if we're even legal, but to give it to those that don't have dinner that night, but I think that's one thing I'd like to help you guys and jump in on. I mentioned it to Ms. Hackett, Ms. Dr. Cron as well. I think that's an area that the town sort of wants us to figure out as well, so I'm not sure what that involves or what it takes, but I'm certainly willing to jump in and Um, I think that's an, an area that the town sort of wants us to figure out as well. So, um, I'm not sure what that involves or what it takes, but I'm certainly willing to jump in and cross that bridge just to see what, you know, instead of wasting it, can it go to the hungry? Can it go somewhere? I think there's a lot of, um, legalities that it can't just go, but I think that's an answer I would like to try to figure out.
I can address that in terms of some other school districts. Um, some districts have a, it's actually a name, Blessing in a Backpack program, which is usually sponsored by local shelters that have, or, or Boston Food Bank or something like that where backpacks will go home, um, on the weekend with non-perishable food. There's other school districts that also do programs like you mentioned where you're taking, um, maybe some leftovers, you know, at the end of the day or at the end of the week and finding a, a local place that those can be better utilized. So yes, we can pursue all of that with collective, um, brain power, the Board of Health, et cetera. So yeah, we, we can definitely pursue that.
Not to put more on you because I know you're already doing plenty, but that is one. My second question is, and I just actually asked this of Ms. Hackett and Dr. Cron, why don't we all get free lunch? Um, and from what I'm hearing, we're pretty close. I didn't realize that. I didn't know there was a percentage. I asked that of them.
As far as programs that are offered so that every student could get a free?
So that every student gets a free lunch and not just some, you know, those that apply, that qualify?
I can provide information to you in terms of how that works. Um, any school district in the Commonwealth basically could do community eligibility provision, which is the CEP program. So a lot of urban school districts with high free and reduced numbers often have this CEP program where breakfast and lunches provided free to every student. Um, in a district like Rockland or other districts where the free and reduced percentage isn't that high and it's based on students that are directly certified, not necessarily those that qualify for free, but directly certified, meaning they may be receiving benefits from the state already for aids with, like aids to families with dependent children or WIC program, Medicaid and things like that. So it's the percentage of those students that are on direct certified benefits times a factor of 1.6. So let's just say hypothetically, I'm going to use round numbers because I can do the math more quickly. Let's say 50% of the students in Rockland were directly certified for free lunch. Fifty times 1.6 is 75%. All of the meals that are served then, of all the meals that are served for breakfast and lunch, 75% of those meals would be reimbursed to Rockland Public Schools at the free rate and the other 25% would be reimbursed at the paid rate. No reduced and no cash is collected. So the program then just becomes income driven by the reimbursements you get from the federal government and the state. I've done the math a zillion times for different school districts because the state will always say, hey, Rockland Public Schools, you're eligible for CEP. Everybody is eligible for CEP, even if you're at 10% free. The, the tricky thing then is the financial viability. Does it make sense financially? Would the income support the expenses?
Right.
Um, at the rate, I think when Ms. Hackett and I looked at it, it would have been financially a losing proposition. Um, but some school districts take that route anyway because they want to do that for the students, even though the surplus that we have right now in the program may dwindle or go away in the next few years. Sometimes that is a decision made by the, by the school committee in the community because they want to do that for the students.
I think we should put all those numbers together and report those to you.
Yeah. But that's basically how it works.
Okay.
The premise of it.
This can be looked at every year. You can look at it every year. So say Memorial Park, we'll just take a store, Memorial Park. Say 75% of their kids are free direct cert or reduced direct cert and the, and the rest are paid. They actually could qualify an individual school because the state had gone through this with us. You don't have to have every single school qualify. That one school could qualify if their percentages are in the right.
Had three schools in it, the percentage could grow and then elementary school students could not have to pay for lunch at all.
Right, right.
So yes, you could group schools. So let's say there's two schools in the community that have a high direct certified population. Those two schools and only those two schools could be selected to be, um, free breakfast and lunch for all students and not the rest of the, um, school district.
Right, right.
We, we faced that dilemma, um, in Brockton Public Schools, which is another school that I, district that I work with. And for a while, the D, the DC numbers weren't high enough. The, the direct cert numbers weren't high enough to make it financially viable, um, until it took us three or four years to get to that point where it became financially viable to do and, and now it's a successful program. But even a district like, like Brockton, you know, struggled to get their numbers up to where they needed to be for a little while.
Interesting. Thank you.
Because the flip of it, right, is you lose the money, you lose the income, it's not viable. Now you need new equipment. We're farming out the money left and right out of the other end, so.
You can always discontinue the program, but then it becomes a PR thing in the community. You start something.
Do we know roughly what our unpaid lunch balance is?
A little over $4,000. Well, it actually has gone down because all our seniors have paid off any outstanding balances and there was quite a few in the seniors and they're all clear. So I would say probably a little over $3,000 right now. But we are doing, as you guys know, connected on a regular basis. Anyone with double digits or triple digits, I actually make personal phone calls to the house. Um, and if I have an issue that I can't get it taken care of, I do go to administration and they will handle someone that will state that they refuse to pay the balance or whatever it might be. Then I put it into their hands. I can only do so much to get them to pay their balances. But I don't know if the parents are aware, the ones that don't pay their balances, that can't carry over, that goes away. Somebody else has to take care of that.
Right.
Right, I'm sure that they don't know that. I just hope that they know they're responsible for it. Well, thank you. Um, so the first vote we need to have is the authorization to hold the prices.
Motion.
Second approved.
All those in favor?
All right.
And the second vote is to renew the Chartwells, um, for another year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
Um, next we have the request for approval of the 2019, 2020 Elementary Handbook. This is the first reading. I, we have Mrs. Sheehan. Yeah. Mrs. Scheifly and Mrs. Smith.
Um, I know we have three changes, minor changes to, um, the handbook. Do you have any questions?
We really had to explain what a delayed opening is?
Um, yes, because we had, we had confusion.
I was going to say, I, I actually received questions when we had that, um, what that was. So I'm glad that that is written out.
Mostly with the kindergarten?
Yes.
Because they don't realize that the delay, you know, even the included them.
They thought they were delayed already. Right, right.
So we had everyone arriving at nine o'clock and it was a little problematic.
Right.
And then people were looking for the bus for their child, but that wasn't the kindergarten run. It was coming two hours later, so.
Right. But we'll get it, we'll get it.
What's next? We're going to have to add what a snow day is?
Yeah. How was declared?
I, yeah, I think as long as we keep communication clear and open, we're in good shape. Thank you.
Okay. Hold up the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
No.
Let's move right on to the elementary.
Yeah.
The elementary.
The school improvement plan.
School improvement plan. So in front of you have three school improvement plans. However, um, we have worked diligently. Um, Jan Sheehan, Memorial Park Principal, Marilyn Smith, Esten School Principal, myself, Michelle Scheifly, Jefferson Principal to align our three schools. Um, so most, everything is the same. Um, you might find a minor differences in building, um, projects or things that we want to do within our specific building. So we'll review our, our common themes. Um, it's an exciting time now because we have math, math and ELA coached plus an assistant superintendent that's really helped us align curriculum. Um, we have Making Meaning, Being a Writer and Foundations, all for English Language Arts, um, programs. Um, we'll be going into year two for Making Meaning and Being a Writer and Foundations. I believe it's year five. Um, and so we'll be continuing to refine our teaching practices around those areas. Um, and also we have new interventions that our special educators have been trained in. Linda Mood Bell, Seeing Stars and Visualizing and Verbalizing. So those will be interventions used in English Language Arts as well as we have, um, established some phonemic awareness, um, interventions. Um, as far as math is concerned, we're, with our math coach, we're continuing to align, um, our math curriculum to the Massachusetts frameworks using that math workshop model and really strengthening, strengthening our tier one, um, curriculum and investigating programs with our math committee. Math programs, um, we'll be further investigating math programs that align with the math workshop model um, next year and looking at them and whether we want to adopt. Um, and we've also, um, in interventions we've used, we've soon, I mean, teachers have been trained in Linda Mood Bell on Cloud Nine, which is a special education intervention. Um, and that's for math. So that's just been done this year. So we'll be rolling it out next year. Um, in science, we're continuing to use the FOS science kits in grades three and four and furthering developing our STEAM curriculum with our, um, specialists, which has been amazing. I'm sure you've seen on Twitter and, um, in the classroom newsletters, just the excitement. Um, as far as assessment, we are continuing to use common assessments in Being a Writer and Making Meaning and in Foundation, um, but also developing some common, teacher common assessments in math. Um, and you, and Mrs. Sheehan will get into this in just a minute, but we're, we're also using iReady at the elementary level, which is in reading and math with benchmark assessments on the computer, um, starting next year that will help us progress monitor students throughout the year. Um, and we are starting to look at beginning to revise our elementary school report cards. Um, that will start. It's a long process, but looking at those standards and adjusting them to ma- match our curriculum. Um, as far as behavioral health and social emotional learning, we're continuing on with PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, um, Responsive Classroom and Second Step in Kindergarten. Um, but we are now, um, training our kindergarten staff in PBS, which is very similar to PBIS, but more developmentally appropriate for our younger students. So all our kindergarten staff will be trained in that, um, at the, at the end of this year and beginning of next year. Um, as far as technology, um, optimizing technology, we're continuing our STEAM curriculum and offering computer classes that stress digital literacy and digital citizenship, um, in particular, um, and increasing our access to technology as well. Um, and providing a safe learning environment, continuing with PBIS, Responsive Classroom and the Alice training, um, is continuing. Our staff and our students will continue to be trained, um, in Alice. I will pass it over to Jan.
Good job, Mrs. Scheifly.
No, she did do a nice job, didn't she? So, um, we base our school improvement plans on, um, the district strategic plan. So Michelle talked about the student learning goals that we have. And now turning to the second, um, section, it's the instructional practices. So the instructional practices are teachers and our teachers teaching our students um, so that they can learn and grow. So Michelle had mentioned that, um, we started Making Meaning and Being a Writer K to four. So now our teachers have had training, they've implemented it for a whole year. Now we're looking for those teachers to own that curriculum. Instead to be able to plan a unit from beginning to end, know where that unit is going. So when they start the unit, um, they know where they need to end, what students need to know and be able to do at the end of it. So this is all about now next year, taking that learning that they had as they kind of went through the mud with it basically this year and just tried to live it. Um, and now they know because they've had it for a year, they've seen the students and how, um, they adapted to the changes in the curriculum. Um, so we're looking to see it really become embedded as a school community of learners because the turn and talks you probably heard about, um, all of that language is common K to four. So it's wonderful that now we're going to have our foundation year and now we can grow. Um, as Michelle had mentioned, the Responsive Classroom and PBIS and PBS. Um, we're training all of our new teachers as well when they come in, um, in, during the mentoring program. All of those things become part of the teacher's repertoire so that they don't come in and say, I've never had that training before and, you know, my colleagues have had it. I don't know what to do in morning meeting. So we're trying to make sure that everyone has like universal, um, professional development so that they can get into the classroom and feel confident. And that is a big, a big advantage to everyone.
Good start.
Yes. And same with the FOS. Um, the teachers really, in grades three and four, really embraced it. And thanks to Lisa Ryan for going in and supporting them and coaching them and mentoring through all of it. They don't have the facilities for teaching science. They have to teach it within their classrooms. So setting it up and, and doing all the things, just the simple things of getting water. It's not easy, um, in our older schools to be able to do that. So it's really been great that the teachers have planned ahead and, um, have really done a nice job with the facilities that they have, um, to work with it. And the students have been loving it too. Um, and then the iReady, I think that is a big, um, change for us, which we've all been actively asking for something like that. And Dr. Cron has been wonderful listening to us saying this because we do all of these assessments, these benchmark assessments, but it's very teacher labor intensive. So it takes the teacher away from instruction to make sure we're assessing and seeing where students are at, which is important. But we want to now have a tool that can be quickly, um, implemented. We get the results instantaneously and then we can do the instruction that we need to do. So this was a win-win for all of us. We were so happy that this is, um, a direction that we're going. Um, so basically in a nutshell, that, those are the things that we're looking to do and the interventions following through with, um, our lead teachers and our coaches. It's been, it's been wonderful. Thanks to Dr. Cron for helping us out in the elementary schools because it really, it really has made huge gains. So I'm going to turn it over to Marilyn for the last two.
Good job, Mrs. Sheehan.
Well, I got two, but one of them's pretty easy, the money piece. So, um, if you give it to us, we spend it. Um, that's basically how it works. Um, and we spend it in good ways. We spend it on professional development for our teachers. Um, district has been very generous in sending people out for workshops, myself included. We talked about professional development, about administrators today um, because that's where you get ideas and learn how to be better.
Right.
We've gotten great programs in. We've got Being a Writer and Making Meaning, we've got the FOS, you know. Expense comes with that in training your teachers on how to implement it. So we bring in trainers and teachers love that training. They, they get so much out of it. We have technology money that we, we decide as, as all of us, how we're going to spend that hundred thousand dollars that we're given every year, um, which is wonderful. Um, and then we have the infrastructure and there isn't enough money in, out there to help these two, but I've been getting a lot of it, so it's good. Um, you know, we've got, Adele mentioned a new serving line. We have a new, um, refrigerator and freezer coming in. Um, the grounds are kept up wonderfully. Um, the Peace Garden, you know, I had some maintenance done out there. So we do spend a lot of money in keeping Esten looking good for a 51-year-old school. So that's all great. Um, we're given budgets every year to, to spend on our kids and what, what our teachers need. Um, sometimes we get to spend it all and sometimes we get the hook and say, okay, you've spent enough. We need it back now. But, you know, we understand and, and we do what we can. So we're, we're, we're good with money. Um, communication and relationships. Rockland's a great town for community. Um, it takes care of its, its own. Um, we, Michelle talked about PBIS and, and, um, bringing up our kids to be safe, respectful and responsible. We've gotten a lot of community feedback. We sent out a, a letter, the three of us earlier this year, about recognizing our children in, out in the community when they're being safe, when they're being respectful and when they're being responsible. And say, we have a, a relationship with Mike's and we're starting one with Themis so that when those kids come in and they have pizza with their parents, if they're recognized for, you know, doing the right thing, they'll stamp their, they'll stamp their receipt and they'll come in and bring it into us and then the community, um, has given us free pizza or, or free pizza and soft drinks. And then we'll pull each, each elementary school will pull one of the kids who brings back the receipt to get a free pizza. So it's, it's a great reach out to the community to recognize our children for doing the right things in the community. Um, we have great other members. We have partnerships with the library. Um, we have partnerships with DESI. We renewed, renewed an old acquaintance from the Family and Community Engagement Program, which is part of the Early Childhood Education Program. Um, a woman by the name of Carol, I forgot her last name. She just dropped, Carver, she just dropped off books to us to give to our kindergarteners for, who are coming in for, during the kindergarten street, scr- yeah, screenings. She's doing a family night, June 27th, I believe. It's a Thursday night where she, we're inviting all our kindergarten parents to come in and make activities so that they can work with their children over the summer to get them more kindergarten ready. So it's a wonderful resource from DESI that there was in Rockland for many years and we just reunited that, that, that partnership. Um, we have other partnerships going with different programs for social emotional learning. We reached out again to DESI for, for free training for our elementary school teachers on LBGTQ information to give to our teachers. Um, for trauma-informed care that we're bringing back to our children for, you know, so many things today in social emotional learning, that so many things that are affecting our children. So we've been, we've been partnership, having partnerships with that.[1797.72] with that. We use a lot of ways to reach out to our families. We talked today about, you know, we have our Blackboard, our Connect. We also, as you see in our newsletters, we have, it's an app. So all of our families are getting, I just sent out one today about our PAC meeting next week, come in and vote to, to elect the PAC official. So we're using newsletters, we're using Twitter. We're reaching out to so many people now and, and provides in different languages. So we're really trying to, to get the information out, bring in the community, and spend all the money we can.
Sounds like a good plan, I, really. I thank you, ladies, for all you do. I know you have a big juggle of being in three different schools, but I do think that you work well. I do think you listen to us parents, going up into the middle school, when we're saying that things are acting different and this, you know, school was doing better than that other school, whatnot. I know for sure that, that's not your intention, that you are trying to plan together and get us all rolling on the same pace until hopefully we get a new school and we're all in together. So I do appreciate all that you're doing. I have been, I've sort of lived in Memorial Park for five years, and I've also stepped into Jefferson a little bit when my kids were in kindergarten. So this year, my goal was to be closer to Mrs. Smith and get into Esten, and I had those opportunities this year. So I thank you for that, too. I got to Shadow, I went to a PD day, and then I just got to go to your Memorial Day celebration, too. So that was good for me. So I appreciate you letting me in, welcoming. Any questions?
I have a question. Well, we have all three of you trapped right there. The one question I get drilled the most about at pickups, and I would love to stop getting it fielded. How do each one of you handle class assignments for the kids? How, like, how do you determine teachers and stuff? I just want to be able to say, "It's done this sort of way," not, yeah.
Since you are my parent, it may be my playground that you're hearing it on, I'll start. So class assignments are actually the grade-level teachers who currently have the students work together based on their instructional levels, based on personalities, both with the personality of the teacher and the student, or the groups of students that are comprised within that classroom. They may create three class lists and then look at the, who's the teacher that would best fit those. So it is completely pulled apart, and Dr. Cronin knows this, because I shared a whole presentation with him the other day. It really is not taken lightly in any way. And it is really thoughtful. And the teachers are very thoughtful of how they think students will work best with each other and with the teacher. So it really is, it's, it's very thoughtful. So there's no favoritism towards one way or the other. It really looks at the best interest of all children across the board.
I, I do that from talking to you.
Yep.
You guys both do the same?
I have a method where it's a sticky note method. So we have three chart papers up, if there's three teachers, and we draw a line and do boys and girls, and we have like high, medium, and low. And we write on the sticky notes, you know, what their DRA level might be, whether there might be an IEP. Yeah, it's kind of like the trade, you know? You do a lot of trading. There's no names on, on the papers. The other thing we also do is we send out, I know, I know you do, send out a letter to the parents, you know, concerns, learning styles, not a teacher request form. Are there, you know, do your, does your child have anxiety? Maybe they need a friend in the classroom? Or is there someone they don't get along with, that you don't want in your classroom? So then we make sure that we, we don't have those children together. And then after we get the, the chart paper up, then I'll bring in the, the specialists, because sometimes they see something that maybe a classroom teacher doesn't see about children that shouldn't be together, and they look at it. And then I go in with my adjustment counselor, my school psychologist, and my, and my special education teachers, and we try to see which teacher would best fit that chart paper.
So the long, the short story is we take a long time. It's a, it's a long month, yeah. So, yeah, so when you, when, yeah, it takes, it takes, it takes, it takes a village to, to build those classrooms, really. It does.
And you want the input from the teachers who had the kids.
Absolutely. And the other, the other part that I think parents struggle with is that remember, we know them best as a student. You may know them best as a child at home, and yes, you can help us with that anxiety, but that classroom teacher that's already had them knows that as well. They know when the anxiety comes out, what's happening in the classroom, how they cope, do they have coping strategies? Do we need to help, you know, teach those? So we know them as a student, and you really do need to like have confidence in the fact that those teachers are going to place them in the very best, because they don't want their colleagues coming back and saying, "Ooh, you didn't tell me about Mike. What the heck? What's that about?" Right?
You mean like what happened to my brother in high school?
They really, they really do want to educate the next teacher, so that the next teacher can, can start the year off positive and, and move forward, so.
I mean, I have no complaints. Isabel has nailed it every year with her teachers, and Charlotte's this year the same.
On the road, yep, exactly.
You, you level out IEPs and 504s, too, right?
So it, that's, that's an interesting one. So we look at the services that each, because each IEP is an individual education plan. So we have to look at the service delivery of those. And DESI is really pushing for more inclusion than to have the pull-out services. So with that being said, you can't have a whole class. It just depends on the, the makeup of the school. If, if the school, if that cohort has a lot of IEPs in it, you might have to put two classrooms of students with IEPs. Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
It just depends on the cohort of students and where that goes. But you can't put them all in one class, because you need some role models as well. Not that they're not role models in themselves, but sometimes, you know, just that discussion, or someone read something that they hadn't gotten a chance to read or something. But it's, it's very collaborative on all fronts.
Then you have to balance that with your EL population. So you might put three children with IEPs in this classroom, three children with this, with IEPs in this classroom, and then put three ELS in this classroom, and three, because you have one special education teacher who's going to say service fourth grade. And maybe you have 10 kids on IEPs in fourth grade, and you have six EL students that the EL teacher know. They'll push into those classrooms or pull out from those classrooms. So you want to balance it off.
Yeah, you don't want to just have it, you know, get ready to pull up, you know, five kids out of the classroom and say, "Oh, no, I have nobody."
Right. So, you know, if you're doing pull-out, they might pull two from one, one from another, but it's the special education teachers to have input to that, because they're the ones pulling out, or they're the ones pushing in. And we want to make sure that, you know, they're able to service all the students.
It's a big relative.
It is. They're juggling, for sure. It takes them all summer. That's why we don't know before, before they tell us. All right. Any other questions?
The only question I have for the administration, real quick, is that, not at MCAS, you've gone to MCAS again, with the technology, and the addition of technology into the elementary schools, is the infrastructure hang, holding up?
Testing went smoothly. Yeah, Tim and, Tim did an outstanding job. And, and again, this was brought up at the Foundation breakfast. Their, their infusion of technology, they've really helped us as well.
And they have one tech person in each one?
We're very lucky. So it's been smooth, yeah.
All of a sudden, a laptop shuts down, and now what? You know, the kids panic, "You lost my desk?"
Right, especially with the MCAS. But I'm more concerned with, because I've seen, I've seen this more and more happening in other schools, is that, you know, we get all this new technology, it all works well, and everybody turns it on at the same time, because we're doing, and, and the bandwidth just go, and it slows down or stops.
That worked out really well.
So we're not, you're not having it.
In fact, Tim added a new server last year and really cranked up our capacity.
That's wonderful.
But maybe others didn't see this, but Tim Wells, he put those Chromebook carts on the back of his pickup truck and strapped them in and delivered them to each school. He worked tirelessly to make sure they were back in, made sure all of us were charged.
Those are heavy, too, I know.
Yes, he did it all by himself.
With the middle school one day, they did science, and the same day we were doing math, and.
And we were fine.
Do you, and you have, you, how do you maintain your, your Chromebook carts in the schools? Just quickly, I mean.
So if there, if there's a problem with them?
No, I'm not. You know, where do you store them? You know, how do you make sure they're all plugged in and everything else? Because that's always a problem.
In my building, we assign them to hallways and different Chromebook carts, or we have some in the library. And the teacher wheels them into their room at night, makes sure they're plugged in, locks the door.
Right, okay.
And Memorial Park has a shared, so third and fourth grade share. They have, yeah, a third grade and a fourth grade classroom.
Thirty, thirty-two cot, thirty-two computers in each cot?
Thirty, twenty-five to thirty, it just depends, yeah.
Twenty-five to thirty, yeah.
And they're across from each other.
And the teachers put in a trouble ticket to Tim if there is a problem with any of them. But he also monitors them. He really is good about coming by and checking.
They're workhorses. I mean, you know, they, they work fine, you know, and they, you know, they, they do well. But, yeah, but you, but find out, particularly my school, I know, they don't plug them in, you know, the, the computers themselves.
Oh, no, no, they're really good about that.
Yeah, that's, that's the key thing.
You know why? Because the kids want to use it the next day.
Right, right, yeah.
We have, it's part of PBIS, too. We have signs on the side of the Chromebook cart on how the Chromebook chart.
Right, it works, okay.
And kids are, are taught that. And when they don't use it.
It's usually not the kids, though. It's usually like when it's.
Well, the teachers just plug them into the wall, and the kids plug them into the cart itself.
Sometimes the teachers take them, you know, never mind. I see that a lot. Okay. And, but I'm concerned about that, but I'm also concerned about the infrastructure, that the bandwidth is.
No, we're doing well.
Yeah, okay.
Tim's done a great job of that.
Good, thank you.
If I could, just, graduation is on Friday, and we'll hear a lot from Dr. Harrison, and Ms. Bond has a number of step-up activities that are going on this week and last week. But what we don't get to do is to say thank you to the three of you who actually oversee perhaps the most important time in a kid's life, K to four. And you three are top, top-shelf professionals, and we're very, very fortunate to have them in our district. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Mr. Evans?
I'm staying because, are we packing now?
I don't know. Do you have more questions? I didn't mean to end it. I just wanted to make sure to say thank you.
I get modest when I get compliments. Starting to move on, okay.
So I think you want to vote to approve the school improvement plans.
Three motions to approve.
I just want to make sure the doctor approves these plans.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. So we have three motions. Do we have seconds?
Three seconds.
All those in favor? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Esten School.
That's why I was.
Don't worry, Deborah can talk fast. She'll get us out of here.
Welcome, Nicole. I almost called her Deborah, too. It's not what I call you.
So we had a really good year again this year. We raised about $24,000. We brought in seven different shows and assemblies covering, we had a reading magician, a couple of science guys came in, we had a history play. Some animals are coming Friday, and we had a African acrobat group that was amazing. The kids were crazy over it. And we have our brain game coming on Friday as well.
So if you want to see an exciting time, come by Friday morning. It's like a real game show.
There's podiums and buzzers and.
And the kids just love it.
It's crazy. So we spent about $6,000 this year on shows and assemblies, but everyone this year was amazing, and the kids loved them all. We had a ton of events, Reading with Munchkins. We have Math with Munchkins tomorrow morning and Thursday morning, Movie Night, Holiday Shopping for the Kids, Special Someone's Dance. We did two McDonald's Nights up in Rockland. They're so good to us. Our Ice Cream Social, our Walk-A-Thon, all were very successful this year. We had three book fairs. We're in the middle of our Buy One, Get One Free Book Fair right now. We were able to place about $1,000 worth of books throughout the classrooms from the book fairs. And then we also gifted every student a book at the holiday time. So they were very excited about that. This year, we also invested in classroom supplies. We worked with Ms. Smith on what we could get to improve the classrooms and different needs of the classrooms. So we purchased 40 mini kid computer desks. They're really cute. They're for the floor. They sit on them. They hold a desk. They play iPads, computers, they read on them. They've been a big hit through the kids. So there's 40 of those throughout the school, roughly two in each classroom. We also bought 16 adjustable wiggle stools, which were a huge hit with teachers as well. I don't know if you've ever seen them, but the bottoms are rounded, so you can kind of rock back and forth and they bounce. So just help kids that need to move a little bit be able to move and still stay focused.
Like a stability ball on a stool.
Yeah. And they're adjustable. They go up and down. So they've been a huge hit. We just ordered 12 more smaller wiggle stools for the younger grades. So they have, we'll get both sides of the school, and everybody will have some wiggle stools in their classrooms. So we've had a very good year, and it's not over. We have a lot more coming up.
Congratulations.
I know.
Good job. I don't know how, how the schools would get along without folks like you and all the people that help you.
And our families. We have great families at Esten that support all our craziness. So we thank them.
The packs are getting together again like they did last year to provide the fourth grade cookout next two weeks.
Fourth grade barbecue, yep. So that'll be June 11th. So, yeah, we got a lot coming up.
So thank you. I know, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate all that you're doing.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yep.
Motion to accept the report. All those in favor? Welcome Cheryl and Mrs. Sheehan again. Cheryl's the MP PAC treasurer.
So I'd like to introduce Cheryl Common. She's on our MP PAC, and this is her first time presenting, and I told her she was going to do a wonderful job, because Mrs. Maroni was in her shoes five years ago, and look where she is now, so.
And I remember watching her five years ago, telling, remember? I was so nervous myself, and now I'm sitting here. So you got it, girl. So hi, my name is Cheryl. I've been in the Memorial Park PAC for, I think, seven years. I still have two years left, so. And next year, I'll be running. I've been doing the treasurer for the seven years that I've been there. So I will start off with our fundraising. We raised about $11,000 throughout the whole year. Our big events are the Fall Halloween Dance, our two ice cream socials. We have winter special someone dance. For fundraisers, we do the fun run, which raised us about $5,500 for the year, which really helps us get a boost in getting the year going with the money that we need. We do Yankee Candle, and then we do a lot of raffles. We do Turkey Feather, Gold Coin Challenge, Box Tops, and general raffles throughout the year. Our, our general expenses are basically, we pay for the buses for the kids to go on the field trips. We pay for the fourth graders to go through all the graduation ceremonies, and that costs us usually between $2,000. The buses will run us about $3,000. Teacher luncheon, teacher appreciation. So the, the money goes out sometimes quicker than it comes in. For book fairs, we do two book fairs. We average about $7,000 between both book fairs, and we give back the school the money in scholastic dollars. It gets a school about $3,500 in scholastic dollars throughout the whole year. For enrichments, this year, we did one enrichment that we actually got a grant for. It's through the magic of communication, and we plan to do that again next year and do an additional one. And for community involvement, what we do is with the raffle money that we collect through what we call Turkey Feathers and Gold Coin Challenges, during Thanksgiving time, the PAC buys two families in need to complete Thanksgiving meals. And we give them to Mrs. Sheehan, and she distributes them to the families that need them. During the holiday season, we participate in Rockland Holiday Magic, and we support two families with their wish list for every member in their family. And we also, at the end of every school year, we give two students who went to Memorial Park for elementary school that are now graduating high school, we give them two scholarships, $500 each, to go on to college and to use for college. So we, at the end, we aren't left with a lot, but we, we try. That's it.
Good job. MP has sort of a different base than Esten and Jefferson, so it definitely struggles. But I think MP has a big heart, and I think it shows. I think, I remember standing where you are and feeling like, these guys are making $20,000, but MP's doing well. You guys are doing well, and I think the students, you know, feel it, and the community is there. And I think giving back, I, how many times did I say, once a dog goes, a dog, and it starts in elementary school. And I think by giving it back, the kids feel that that's who they are. So again, same as Nicole, we appreciate all you do. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you for coming tonight. You did awesome. I knew you could do it.
Motion to approve the report.
Motion.
We're trying to approve the report.
All those in favor? That's the vote. Thank you. Good job. Okay, now we're on to fundraisers. Yeah, seriously. Yeah, seriously. The preschool PAC has a cookie dough fundraiser in September, and the special education PAC has a toll booth they just had. They're toll booth in May.
Yeah.
I'm confused. So, these are requests for next year? Yes, so we need two votes, please, two motions.
Two motions.
All those in favor? That's the vote. And then we have a request for approval of the reappointment of Bob Mahoney to the Social Regional School District Committee for three years.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hold on.
Okay.
Did anything, go out to anybody else in town about this? Do we know? I'm only curious, just because...
I'm not sure, I don't know how...
What do you mean?
Do you mean, did we solicit input from the public?
This is not directed at Mr. Mahoney, obviously. I'm just curious, you know, we just get a thing saying his term's up, but...
Except that he was, he was appointed, he was approved at the town meeting. But it was, but it's position.
Yep.
So, he was advertised at a town meeting.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure, I just was curious, like I said.
Approved at town meeting.
It's, like I said, it's nothing against Bob, it just was more, so...
So, anyway, actually, we should have done this before it went to town meeting.
Probably.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, are you good? Okay, I didn't want to cut you off, okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so motion in a second? All those in favor? Okay. Personnel information, Dr. Kron?
I just want to thank all the folks that are coming and going. We have a number of, number of people leaving us and a number of people joining us, and thank you for your service, and welcome to the Rockland Public Schools.
There's a couple of retirements.
Yep, some retirements.
There's some big retirees.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, on to public service announcements. Ms. Harrison, can I start with you first?
Okay, I would just like to say congratulations to the class of 2019, and enjoy graduation.
Mr. Mills?
Same here, but some is here, be careful. You know, do we have, we have one, two more meetings? Do we have two meetings in June?
Two.
Two, we have two left.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, but just be ca, you know, it's starting to get nice out, people out there, you know, be careful what you do, you know, particularly, you know, with proms and parties and graduations, and be judicious. It is probably, yeah.
That's a very big word.
Yes, what you do, thank you.
Mr., are you next, Mr. Phelps?
Fine, okay.
We'll go there, we'll go down the road.
All right, tonight's going to be all about me. I want to thank National Honor Society for recognizing myself and Jimmy Cahill, who made us honorary members of the National Honor Society. I think for both of us, it was a reach, but I don't, I don't care. Jimmy is as happy as can be, and so, and so am I. And now, I'd like to apologize to the senior class this year. I'm unable to attend graduation, which quite frankly, really bothers me. I have a grandson who's graduating in a neighboring school, and it's the same time, it's the same date and everything, so I think unfortunately, blood is thick in the water, and I will be there instead of this year at Rockland High School.
All right, I had the pleasure of attending your national honor and watching you, and so thank you for that night, because I got to, that was a special moment for me to be able to share that with you. So, thank you. Mr. Garafal?
Yes, graduation is literally right on the corner, guys. Congrats, you did it. I will say, Mr. Phelps, that Jasmine clued me in onto what they were doing, and she was amazed that she was able to keep it quiet as long as they did, so, well-deserved honor. I wouldn't say it's a reach.
No.
You're sitting here, and you're doing a great job.
Not at all.
It's a well-deserved honor.
You wouldn't say you'd be sitting here in 1958.
Yeah, but you graduated here, ran a business, and here you are, so you're doing something right. And as far as Jimbo goes, I love the guy. I would like to see Jimbo's name in any possible recognition and Hall of Fame that could ever be done. The guy has been one of the most supportive people ever to Rockland athletics and to Rockland kids, so anytime Jimbo gets honored, it's a, it's a good day, so...
He was so excited, it was a moment.
He's amazing.
Total moment.
Yeah, he's, he's, I used to live for his pre-game speeches in football. There was nothing better than a Jimbo speech, so...
Okay, I don't have much myself either. I'm not going to be able to attend the National Honor Society, I mean, the senior banquet on Thursday night, but I will be at graduation, and I agree, congratulations to all these graduates Friday night, but then next week as well. Thursday is the adult education graduation, and congratulations to those as well. I think that's all I have.
And it's supposed to be good weather.
Rock on wood, yeah.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, have a good night, thank you.